Everyone's ready? All right, good evening, everyone, and welcome to Lebanon City Council Meeting for October 23rd, 2023. And if you would all join me by rising for the prayer and the pledge allegiance.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, I come here tonight with the heart of gratitude for your outpouring of blessings on our city. We humbly ask for your continued favor and guidance. Tonight, I ask that council, the mayor, her staff, and those in attendance have clear minds and discernment that comes from your guidance in tonight's proceedings as we work to continue bettering our community. I pray over the turmoil and instability from the upheaval of the wars abroad. I pray for your protection over the innocent, for the wisdom for those who lead us, and that your hand be with those who defend us. And here in Lebanon City, continue pouring of your blessings and protection upon the people of Lebanon, the city employees, and the first responders that safeguard our life and property. May we move forward with faith, unity, and shared commitment to the well-being of our beloved city. In all this, I pray in the name of Jesus. Amen.
And Cheryl, if you could please call the roll.
Thank you.
Mr. Hados?
Here.
Mr. Martin?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Wertz?
Here.
Chairman Morales?
Here. All right, you've all received the minutes for September 25th. Do I have any additions, corrections, or deletions? Hearing none, the minutes will stand as distributed. You've also received the budget report for January 1st through September 30th, 2023. And Mayor, if you could give us a rundown of where we stand?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair. With 75% of the budget year completed, revenues are at 97%, expenditures 64%, so we are performing better than budgeted in both categories.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Any questions from council? And from anyone in attendance? Okay. Moving on tonight, we have a presentation by Michelle Hawke, the Executive Director for Lebanon Community Library. And Michelle, we look forward to this every year. And you might have to press and hold that button. Okay. Give it a second.
Hey, better?
Better, thank you.
That's good, because I have a good voice for libraries. It doesn't carry very far. So, thank you for having me tonight, and thanks for saying that you look forward to it. I appreciate it. My name is Michelle Hawke, and I'm the Director of the Lebanon Community Library. And I'm just here to give you an update on how we've been doing this year and how your residents have been using our library. So, things continue to look up since the pandemic. Of course, usage was down while the building was closed. We were open online, amped up our e-library, but still, it's not quite the same. So, we're definitely coming back up. The storytimes are doing well, the baby storytimes are doing well, summer learning program just had a huge number of kids here over the summer. And that keeps the kids reading and learning over the summer so that they don't have that summer slump in their education, so that hopefully when they went back to school this fall, they hit the ground running. That's the goal. We recently launched a program called A Thousand Books Before Kindergarten, and the goal of that program is just to have parents read with their children with a goal of 1,000 books. And it's totally doable. It sounds like a lot, but you can count if you have to read the same story every night, three times a night, that counts, because that's all reading and learning and getting kids familiar with books. Our Books to Go program continues. That is our delivery to homebound individuals through the Lebanon Lions Club and with volunteers. So, people sign up for that, indicate what kind of books they're interested in, and then we choose and deliver them each month. Our FIT classes are back. That's Finding Independence Through Technology, thanks to the Bishop Foundation. And these are technology classes for adults. We have a tech help every Monday, and that is like whatever technology issue people are having, they reserve a 30-minute slot, and they have Keith's undivided attention for that time, and he helps them with whatever issue they're having. And then we're also having a Windows 11 class. That's a new one added, coming up on November 15th. So, recently, I have been working on an application for the Keystone Grant. That's later on your agenda. But we're hoping to remodel our public restrooms. The building was built in 1985, and that's when the restrooms were last touched. So, there's plenty of work to be done there. Janelle Mendoff was a huge help to me in preparing that so far, so I'm hopeful that we're able to get that grant. And you contribute $33,000 a year, and thank you very much for that. So, I measured the usage of Lebanon City residents alone of our library with books, movies, magazines, music, ebooks. And in 2022, Lebanon City residents borrowed materials worth over $1.1 million. So, that's pretty impressive. And that doesn't count the public computers that they use, the free Wi-Fi, the programs they attend, and then online resources like News Bank, which gives access to newspapers across the country. So, I don't know if I've timed this correctly for your budget work. I was gonna request an increase, if that is possible. Right now, it's $33,000. I was going to ask for $37,000. I think that's still a good bargain for what Lebanon City residents are getting out of it. And the challenge that we're seeing right now is nobody gets rich working at the library. Our starting rate right now is $10.50 an hour, which people can find so much more working elsewhere. So, we're really having a hard time keeping and attracting good staff. So, that's what I'm asking for the increase for. And if you have any questions, I can answer them now.
Michelle, when do you expect to, or are you hoping to hear back about the grant? Do you have a timeframe there?
Well, I'm hoping for your authorization this evening, and then the grant is decided February 2024. So, if we get it, the project would take place in, I think it's like September through December 2024.
I meant that. When I look forward every month, when Cheryl sends out your monthly events calendar, I mean, it's amazing, all that's going on at the library. So, I really meant that.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council?
Yeah, I'm just wondering if you could expand a little bit on the 1,000 Books program. I remember going through some stuff when I was a child with my parents and remembering some of the rewards and stuff and going to the library and all of that.
Yeah. So, our children's librarian, Sarah, handles that program. So, it's kind of a nationwide program, but it's set up so that kids, when they sign up with their families, they may get like a free book or a tote bag to get started. And then they can borrow, you know, whatever books they want or read their books from home. They keep track of them. It's a really easy, like, just piece of paper. Most parents prefer the paper instead of the apps right now. But, so they keep track of that. They come in and check in with Sarah periodically, and she puts their name up when they hit 100, 200, 300, and they get a free book to keep. And they really enjoy hitting those milestones.
Sounds, that sounds really neat. I gotta bring my son in for this. So, thank you.
Any other questions?
Just one question, Michelle, and you can just, you know, spitball this, obviously. I don't need an exact number. But as far as library usage, if you had to guess, like, what percentage of the clientele that are coming into the library, or the percentage of the usage is actually city residents? Any rough idea where that's hanging out at?
Rough idea, because we do serve all of the surrounding municipalities, and then as the district center, we serve the whole county. I would say, I would guess 60% to 70% are city residents. It's nice, because we're centrally located. The bus stop's right there. We have a nice parking lot. You know, we have a few things in our favor.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Any other questions from council? And from anyone in attendance this evening? Okay. Michelle, again, thank you so much for coming in, and thank you for everything that you do. Yes. Okay. Moving on, under Communications, the first item, Pennsylvania Auditor General Timothy DeFor, transmitting the audit of the Liquid Fuels Fund, Liquid Fuels Tax Fund, for the period of January 1st, 2021, through December 31st, 2022. And Mayor, if you could give us a little background?
Sure. So, this audit is for the period January 1, 2021, to December 31, 2022. During the auditor's engagement, they did not identify any deficiencies in internal control that they would consider to be material weaknesses. As a part of obtaining their reasonable assurance, whether the MS 965, which is an annual form of revenues and expenditures out of the Liquid Fuel Fund, are free from material misstatement, they performed tests, and the results of the tests were there was no disclosure, no instances of noncompliance or other matters that were required to be reported under government auditing standards. However, they did note that the liquid fuels money was over expended on a project. The amount of liquid fuels money approved by PennDOT to be expended from the Liquid Fuels Tax Fund, which is the state allocation, was $156,330.20. The city proposed to use its county aid liquid fuel money, which is $25,477 at that time, which is the annual allotment from the county, which must be expended from the general fund. That was to make up the difference on the total cost of the project, which was $181,807.20. An employee made a mistake and accidentally coded the N-TAR bill to the separate state allotment, Liquid Fuel Fund, and it was discovered and reimbursed, but the mistake was made. It was corrected and should be noted on the next audit.
Thank you, Mayor. Any questions from council? I don't know if maybe moving forward, Mayor, is there a way that before that goes forward, we can?
Yeah, we've had these conversations in the past. This was, it was just coded incorrectly. And I've been thinking that we're gonna have a meeting to go over what we can do additionally besides some things we've already had implemented.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Any questions from?
Chris Coyle from Levetown. So, there was a bill that was just, what's the word I'm looking for? It was attributed to the wrong account.
Yeah.
Okay, that means we had the money, the money was there, it's just on the books, it was put in the wrong place.
Right.
Okay.
And we corrected it.
Yeah.
And it was noted, but it's just because the error was made, they have to note it.
Sure. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Okay. Our second item under Communications, Mayor Sheri Capello, informing council of the reappointment of William Bishop to the Fire and Police Civil Service Commission for a four-year term. That's effective October 1st, 2023. And Mr. Bishop has served on the commission since January 2017. And a little background, Mayor.
Sure. So, that's almost seven years. He's very community-minded, does a great job for us. We appreciate his willingness to serve. And yeah, this would be his first reappointment.
Great. Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Any questions from council? And again, as I stated on Thursday night, I've worked with Bill with the, oh my God, drawing a blank.
Salvation Army.
Salvation Army, thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Great individual. We worked together on the canteen truck, and Bill's just, he's good people. We're fortunate to have him. So, thank you to Bill Bishop. And any questions from anyone in attendance tonight? All right. Moving on to the third item under Communications from Mayor Sheri L. Capello, informing council of the reappointment of Brad Longenecker to the City of Lebanon Authority to fill the unexpired term of Gary Matthews, effective October 6th, 2023, and expiring January 1st, 2027. And Mayor?
Thank you. So, Gary Matthew, I think everyone probably knows him. Owner of Matthew and Hockley passed away unexpectedly just a short time ago. Brad is a local realtor and has experience in accounting and human resources. He is a city resident and a longtime county resident, and we welcome his area of experience to the Authority Board. And this would be his first appointment to that board to fill the unexpired term.
All right. Thank you, Mayor.
It's with deep sadness that we do this, of course, because Mr. Matthews was a longtime volunteer.
Absolutely. And do I have any questions from council? Chris?
Just a quick question. Do we know, do you know offhand how long Gary Matthew was served on the Authority? If you don't, it's no big deal. I'm just curious.
They're probably gonna look at you, Cheryl.
Okay.
Long time.
It was, yeah.
It was a long time.
Yeah. That's all. Thank you.
I don't have that. We can find that out for you.
That's all right. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Again, we appreciate the volunteers for these different boards. There's so few people out there, so anybody we can get. And we've gotten some great quality individuals, so. All right, the last item tonight under Communications from Mayor Sheri L. Capello, informing council the appointment of Chad M. Yeagley as Director of Public Works, effective October 16th, 2023. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, we hired Chad in the spring of this year, so he would have an appropriate period of time to be trained in all aspects of the Public Works Director role. Chad did not have direct experience as a Public Works Director working for a city, but he does come with a solid background in ensuring the proper use of government funds, oversight of construction activities, including field reviews, inspections, as well as he conducted his own training program. So, we welcomed Chad to the City of Lebanon, and...
Great. Director Yeagley, congratulations.
Welcome aboard. And I also have, she's gonna be mad at me. Robin? You knew you weren't gonna get off easy. So, we do have a certificate of recognition for you upon Robin's retirement, which is gonna be November 3rd of this year. Robin began her career with the city in 2014, serving as a Director of Public Works. She came to the city with 27 years of local government experience and a wealth of knowledge. She held numerous training certificates, including a certified municipal clerk certificate, which she obtained in 2012. And during her time here, Robin served as Chair of the Lebanon County Stormwater Consortium, Treasurer of the Lebanon County Tax Collection Committee, a Board of Director member of the Greater Lebanon Refuge Authority, a Board of Director Ex officio for the Community of Lebanon Association. She also served on the Steering Committee for the Lebanon County Clean Water Plan, which was a part of the Conservation District. In 2020, she was part of the Lebanon County Long Range Transportation Plan Steering Committee, and she served on the city's Planning Commission and the Shade Tree Commission. And those are a lot of evening meetings, right, Robin? Whereas with over nine years of experience, she is retiring effective November 3rd, she will be missed by her coworkers, friends, and me. So, now therefore, I Sheri Capello, Mayor of the City of Lebanon, hereby commend Robin Getz for her work ethic. I express sincere appreciation to her for her faithful service. I extend my personal best wishes upon her retirement and wish her continued success in life's pursuits. You're welcome. So, I want to thank everyone. This has been a great opportunity for me, but my husband told me, he retired a little over a year ago. He said, "You'll know when the time is right." And he is correct. After doing 30, almost 38 years of nighttime meetings and daytime meetings and planning and, you know, you reach a point where it's like, okay, now I want to enjoy life with the grandkids and, you know, go do some traveling. And sorry, Chad, but not worry about any more snowstorms or sleeping in the building for five days. So, I appreciate the mayor and council for the support that you've given me, your help and assistance in doing MS 4, which is a huge thing when I came here. But I think everybody working together as a team makes the dream happen, and I'm very appreciative for my time here. And thank you to all the residents of the City of Lebanon. It has been a great pleasure to serve you. Thank you, Robin.
Robin, I think I can speak for council. Huge thank you for your service, not only to the city, but the county for all those years. Thank you. And council, I don't know if anyone has anything for Robin. Okay. All right. All right, moving, we have one item under Resolutions tonight, Resolution Number 40, authorizing the proper officials of the City of Lebanon to file a Keystone Grant application with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Education for renovations to the public restrooms at the Lebanon Community Library. And do I have a motion for Resolution Number 40?
I'd like to make a motion for Resolution Number 40.
And I'll go ahead and second that. And Mayor, I don't...
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You want to give us a little bit on that?
As Michelle indicated, they'd like to remodel their public restrooms. And again, the restrooms were original to the library initial construction in 85. They need ADA updates as well. And plus, they want to add a family restroom in addition to renovating the existing restrooms. As I explained on Thursday, the Keystone Grant must be technically submitted by the municipality, by the City of Lebanon, but between Michelle and Janelle. And I will pass on your sentiments to Janelle. She couldn't be here this evening. But together, they work together to fill out the necessary paperwork. The actual grant is a 50-50 match grant, and the cost of the project is $137,000. The match would be $68,500, and the library will cover that match, though there's no cost to the City of Lebanon.
Great. All righty. And do I have any questions from council? And from anyone in attendance? Okay. Hearing none, Cheryl, if you could call the roll?
Mrs. Hados?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Wertz?
Yes.
Chairman Morales?
Yes, that's five in favor, none against. Resolution Number 40 is so moved. So, there we go. All right. Under ordinances, we have two items tonight, the first being Bill Number 12, approving the editing and inclusion of certain ordinances as part of the various component codes of the codified ordinances of the City of Lebanon, Pennsylvania. And this is on final reading. And do I have a motion?
I'd like to move for the adoption of Bill Number 12.
And do I have a second?
A second.
Okay. Pick one, Cheryl. Bill Number 12 has been moved and seconded. Mayor?
Yes, thank you. So, we used to do this biannually. We are now submitting our ordinances for the current session on an annual basis. And there's four ordinances that will be codified. One is to modernize the language in the code, so that we're more aligned with industry standard when it comes to the use of titles like Fire Commissioner versus Chief. Our county DS uses the title Chief. We're the only city that utilizes Commissioner for a chief position. The other ordinance would be providing for the tax levy of the city for the year 2023, 4.581 mils for eight straight years. The third ordinance, the governor had signed into law that new homeowners receive a waiver from the property tax penalty if they did not receive a notice within one year of owning the property. And also, it includes language that the tax collector would not personally be liable if they had acted in good faith in their duties. The last ordinance is regarding the addition of two municipal lots in the city wherein vehicles were parked, but operators were not being charged. And to be fair and consistent, to the residents, we charge for all of the municipal lots on a monthly rental basis when we're renting out spaces. And so, this would be the lot at the former Northwest Elementary School across the street where the parent drop-off pickup was, and also at, across the street from the Knights of Columbus, which would be CNL and Ninth.
All right. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
And do I have any questions concerning Bill Number 12 from council? And from anyone in attendance? Okay. Hearing none, Cheryl, if you could please call the roll?
Mrs. Hados?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Wertz?
Yes.
Yes, that's five in favor, none against. Bill Number 12 is so moved, and this was on final reading. Moving on, last item tonight, Bill Number 13, amending subsection 51303, Hours of Operation of Article 513, Parking Meters for the Purpose of Designating Juneteenth as a Parking Meter Holiday. And this is on introduction, and I would like to make a motion for Bill Number 13. Do I have a second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Ryan, thank you. Bill Number 13 has been moved and seconded. Mayor?
Yes. So, President Biden signed legislation making Juneteenth a federal holiday, which commemorates the end of slavery in the United States. The city follows the federal holiday schedule for our Parking Meter Holiday, so visitors are not confused. The ordinance would add this day as a free meter parking day in the city.
All right. So, that just brings us in line with what we do for...
With all federal holidays.
Any questions from council?
There's 11 of them.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
And from anyone in attendance? Hearing none, Cheryl, if you could please call the roll?
Mrs. Hados?
Yes.
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 Yes, that's five in favor, none against. Bill Number 13 is so moved, and this is on introduction. I guess everyone can see behind me, November, of course, we're going to have our budget hearing, so a busy month. If you want some excitement, come out for those first two budget hearings. Everyone's invited. And the mayor's favorite month, so. With that, that, I believe, is that our, it is. That concludes our formal agenda tonight. At this time, I'll open up the floor for council for any statements. Richard?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The parking meters that have been removed on the streetscape, will we be getting new parking meters, or will we be using the old ones?
We're using the old ones because they were refurbished, but we'll be getting new metal sleeves. And the round caps at the bottom, it's like a circle. Sorry. Base plate.
Okay. All right. Thank you. That's all I...
And Mayor, I think you might have covered this, but how long do you think they will be working on Cumberland Street, just as long as they can, or they're gonna, as long as weather permits?
It's proposed to lay off the demolition crew. He has different crews that do different aspects of the work. So, there will come a time when he won't be able to open up any more sidewalk or pour. I mean, they're gonna pour, it really depends on the weather, because they're going to use warming, heating blankets, and, you know, they'll keep going as long as they can.
Thank you, Mayor. Any other questions from council? And one item I do have is we have the Police K-9 Ball Auction coming up on November 5th.
Sunday.
That's a Sunday night. So, we would invite everyone out for that evening of festivities and items to auction off, to include, I think, lunch with the chief and the mayor. So, we'll see what happens there. Anyway, at this time, I'll open the floor up to anyone with any questions. Craig? I'm sorry, Craig.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Chris.
Okay, Chris Coyle, Levetown, real quick. The 13th November 16 Special City Council meeting, that's to adopt the budget, I take it, after we have the two budget hearings?
Yes.
That's all.
Okay. Craig?
Craig Gates, on behalf of CLA, just to give you a couple updates on things happening downtown. Right now, we are having ghost tours. We had some this past Friday and Saturday, and we have two more coming up this Friday and Saturday, where we have a local psychic who will give a little tour through downtown and giving her version of ghosts and psychic things. Her name's Jan, that's all I know. If you're interested in attending, you...
No last name.
...the website, clacom and sign up this Friday and Saturday.
Did you actually take the tour, Craig?
No, but I did speak with her. She's very interesting, put it that way.
I'm just curious how...
I took the tour one time, not this year.
Okay.
And it was fun.
Points out different buildings and what she thinks she knows about and sees and hears, so.
Look for orbs and things like that.
Coming up Friday, November 17th, we're gonna have the tree lighting, the annual tree lighting downtown at 6 o'clock up at Ninth and Cumberland, right, Chad? Everything will be ready? We thank the city again for putting the tree up for us every year. Then our biggest event of the year is Saturday, November 18th, is the annual holiday parade, and that'll kick off around 10 o'clock. We do have Alicia Richards and I believe Val Pritchett are gonna be in town again, hosting right up here in front of City Hall. Takes a lot of volunteers. If you know any church groups or Boy Scout groups or anybody who would like to help, banner carriers, balloon carriers. We're having six balloons this year. I think three are helium and three are just the air balloons where you pull them up the street. Lots of bands, lots of music, lots of participation. And then in December, the first two Fridays in December, we have the Horse Drone Carriage rides, the first two Friday nights. They are meet in front of Market and go down Chestnut and up around. So we already had, we were approached by some residents on Chestnut Street about putting lights on the island, so we're gonna see what we can do to help out there. So any other information you would like, lebanoncla.com. Thank you.
Craig, thank you so much for everything you do in CLA. For those that, I'll make this quick, Melissa. For those that haven't been out to the parade lately, it really is a great parade. It's really come along. Look forward to it now every year, so. All right. Any other questions from anyone in attendance this evening? Yes, sir. Go Phillies. I think they're playing right now, right?
330 East Speed Street.
They're losing.
Just wondering, is Lincoln Avenue between Schneider Drive and Lehman Street gonna get the trenches restored before wintertime? Lincoln Avenue between Schneider and Lehman? Because the one that Lincoln, the one right at Lincoln Avenue and Lehman Street is really bad. So maybe the contractor could fix it up a little bit? No, it's just before the intersection. It's on Lincoln Avenue just before you get on Lehman Street. It's really bad. And also, at Fifth Street at Cumberland, is there any way you can get the arrows and the line put down on the street so people know the right-hand lane goes right and the left-hand lane goes straight? Because there's no, there's nothing there anymore. The sign's there, but there's nothing on the street, and people are just going straight from both lanes, and one of these times, there are gonna be an accident.
We're actually still working on that because we were going to do a major stormwater project there. And through some issues we were having, we weren't able to do it, but we're going to be doing some work. So until we have that finished, we can't put the lines and stop bars and arrows back because we don't know how much exactly they're gonna have to disturb.
Well, let's just hope nobody has an accident because if you got signs up that tell you what to do and the markings in on the road, and an accident happens, you could be held accountable.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Hearing none, I will take a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
This council will stand adjourned.